America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have a more standing up at the chief Corvo.
Certainly. Would you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I Gerard Corvo.
I Gerard Corvo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I Gerard Corvo.
I Gerard Corvo.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the planning board to the best of my ability.
Of the planning board to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
All right. Can you read the statement certification of the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to Sunshine Wall.
Please go a roll.
Mr. Nero.
Here.
Mr. Malham. Mr. Zangary.
Here.
Mr. Condi.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Gold.
Here.
Mr. Corvo.
Here.
Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Wammen.
Here.
Ms. Rifo. Here. Mr. Novarato. Mr. Guyan.
Here.
Mr. Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Then Mr. Tenhold filling in for Mr. Vito.
Here.
Could I have a motion for the approval admitted for the September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting? Make a motion. Mr. Corvo roll.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Condi.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Gold.
Yes.
Mr. Corvo.
Take no part.
Mr. Graziano.
Take no part.
Ms. Wammen.
Take no part.
Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
And Ms. Rifo.
Yes.
Old business, we had resolutions to be memorialized was PB twenty-nine oh seven, six oh eight Mill Street. Corin, that's not ready to be memorialized, is that correct?
Correct.
We have a few adjournments for tonight. We have PB twenty-nine oh four, thirty Washington Avenue. PB two-five zero four plus A twenty-one Terry Street. PB twenty-eight oh eight, six seventy-five Main Street. And part two of seven oh five, there's seven fifty-seven Main Street. These are all adjourned, there will be no further announcement, they will all be scheduled for our next regular meeting, which is Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
And if anybody is here in connection with those applications, you will not receive any additional written notice. This is the only notice of the newly scheduled papers.
Thank you. Applications before the board. We have PB twenty-nine ten, one oh seven Baldwin Place, block forty-two oh one, block four point oh two, one oh seven Baldwin Owners LLC.
This chairman council's name is Robert Cassion, I represent the applicant. I'm prepared to proceed if there's no preliminaries that you need to follow. Mr. Chairman, members of board, as I said, it's Robert Cassion, Gassion Palaco, five twenty-four Union Avenue in Belton. I represent the applicant in this matter, one oh seven Baldwin Owners LLC. My client owns one oh seven Baldwin Place and is seeking approval to erect a two-family dwelling. A two thousand and eighteen application to erect a two-family was denied by the board. There has been a substantial change in this application and those changes will be reviewed by the architect. The proposal eliminates the parking violation that was in existence at the last time and reduces the overall size of the structure. The only remaining violation is the insufficient width of the front yard. The witnesses you'll hear from, Jose, Joe Diaz of one oh seven Baldwin Owners LLC, Ivan Cedra, the architect, Adna Khan, the engineer, and William Stimel, the planner. Now, we've got a couple of issues with attendance, I expect everybody's going to be here, but Mr. Khan is tied up in another community and Mr. Stimel's daughter fell and was hospitalized and is okay and he is on his way here. Mr. Diaz will give a brief history of the property and review what it is he's seeking approval to build and discuss how, I don't know if everybody remembers, but we were on a couple of months ago and at that time there was a little confusion about zoning ordinance and it was thought that this proposal could be approved without a board appearance, but it was determined that they cannot and therefore, and at that time my planner thought that, and, but now because of that, it's been delayed and we're ready to proceed tonight. After the testimony of Mr. Diaz, Mr. Cedra will take care of the architectural testimony and he will be the one who reviews the exact detail of the changes from the previous application to this application to show that Ray Judith, that kind of does not apply. And obviously, he's going to describe the proposed new structure. Adna Khan will review the site from an engineering perspective and discuss the parking and drainage. Final witness will be Bill Stimel, who will discuss the variance in question, which is the insufficient width and how, in his opinion, the application can be approved on a C1 basis, a hardship of the property. I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Diaz.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
You mentioned that there's only one variance that's being sought, some of the documents that were submitted indicated that there was a rear yard variance required as well.
There was a mistake in the way that was measured, there is more than sufficient rear yard. Someone was measuring at an angle for some reason, I have no idea why, but there is more than sufficient rear yard. Tom, take a look. Let Mr. Harris take a look just to make sure.
The rear yard is twenty feet, he has said it's twenty-five feet, so not twenty feet, so he has twenty-three, twenty-three, three.
Yeah, but, but it's not, see? He's going on a side, he's going on an angle for some reason, or why he's going on an angle? This is the rear yard. Anybody have a plan in front of them, any questions about that?
Well, I would defer at this point to the engineer's position with regard.
Did you advertise those are written, and then you were all variances?
Oh, yeah, we probably said variance, but it's not a variance. I don't know why it was measured that way, it can't be measured that way, it's in an angle. Frank, you see?
I see, but it's behind the, the rear house, that's what it's saying, it's the rear yard. The back of the building line would be part of the rear yard.
Why don't you just proceed, I'll take a look.
Okay, I mean, I'll proceed with both if Mr. Di Lorenzo thinks it should go that way. I don't see, if you also deal with the property adjacent, you deal with the property as it goes to the rear, but it's no problem. Mr. Chairman, shall I call my first witness?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Jose Diaz. I own the lot of one oh seven Baldwin Place.
Mr. Diaz, what is your business address?
Three oh one Norton Route seventeen, Suite eight hundred in Rockford, which is recently moved, so probably you have on your breakfast one Oriental Way, F two thirty-six, Rockford, New Jersey.
And what is your occupation?
I am a developer, I'm an engineer.
And are you a member of one oh seven Baldwin Owners LLC?
I am.
And are you the managing member?
Yes, I am.
And does that imply you own one oh seven Baldwin Place in Belton?
Yes, sir.
And what is, is it that you're seeking approval to do at this property?
A two-family home.
And if approved, will you be the general contractor on this house?
Yes.
Do you also plan to remain the owner of the property?
Yes.
And do you have plans at this time that a member of your family will be one of the occupants?
Yes.
And can you explain to the board why you have a rear door in the basement of the property?
Well, when we submitted the plans to the building department, Belton Building Department, during the plan review, we were called in and we were asked to have a second major egress to the, to the basement level, which is something that I originally wanted to do anyways. The first floor apartment will be occupied for, I think that's the intent, for us, my mother to occupy that apartment, our brother the quadriplegic, so he will stay down in that area, that's, that's the intent, as of if we are able to get this two-family unit approved.
So your mother and your brother would technically occupy the first floor.
Yes.
But your brother, because of being a quadriplegic, would be in the basement a lot of the time to get access out through the rear.
Yes.
And... I really have no further questions, Mr. Diaz.
Anybody in the board have a member of this witness? Anybody in the public have a question?
The basement or grade level?
It's, it's grade level. Grade level, yes. We call it ground level. Yes, ground level.
Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Flag Street. I want to raise a point of order here, as the members of the planning board are well aware, since July of this year, I have been challenging the legality of the planning board membership. Mr. Vito's not here tonight, there's a new attorney covering, but the fact of the matter is that this board currently has a township employee serving as a class four member, that is a deliberate violation of Title fourteen of municipal land use laws. Mr. Vito tried to tell, tell us in July that there were exceptions to that law, to that rule. She said she would provide something in writing, the chair of the planning board also asked her to give her, him a written explanation, she has not complied with that to this, to this moment. I have talked to several municipal land use law attorneys, they have emphatically told me there are no exceptions, that she will never be able to give me a written explanation because there is no written explanation. Now, that leads me to conclude that either she's lawfully ignorant of the law as an attorney, or she's not being truthful. In either case, it jeopardizes her, her status as an attorney. I want to bring this to your attention as well, because I feel that this, this board is operating illegally and that everything that it's decided since February this year could be called into question and stayed if it went brought to, to a court, to a judge.
Thank you.
So that's all I want to say right now.
I am obviously filling in here tonight, I'm not in a position to give you a direct answer, however, I was told that the attorney, who was the regular attorney for this board, had opined that there is case law that justifies the current makeup of the board. And I was also told that, as you said, she is preparing a written opinion that will specify the basis for doing that. Obviously, she couldn't do that here tonight because she's not here for good reason. I'm sure that that will be addressed when she returns.
It's been three months.
I, I can tell you it will be addressed when she returns.
I doubt it.
All right, Michael Lonaker, one oh five Baldwin Place, I live in that property, that's a Jason.
What was your last name?
Lonaker.
W.A.N.A.K.E.R.
I'm sorry, first name again?
Michael.
And spell that last name.
L.O.N.E.K.E.R.
And the address?
One zero five Baldwin Place.
Thank you.
I, I went to the board office and looked at the proposal, the plan showed that the basement floor, the first floor essentially, because there is not an underground basement, it's a, it's a basement above ground, had roof for two cars to park inside, and then the back of it had what looked like, you know, all the rough plumbing to put in a studio apartment, floor drains, rough plumber for water in, and, so I'm confused if this is a three-unit building that's going in, or a two-unit building going in. And I also have a question about the parking, because when I looked at it, it said that the two upstairs, the first and second floor apartments were to be two bedrooms each with a study. I'm not sure if the zoning board ever got to a conclusion whether the studies would be counted as a bedroom or not when we assess the parking, but by looking at it, the amount of parking that will be removed from the street, the two spots that will be removed to open up that double driveway, to give the four spots on the property, would be only really netting two parking spots out of all of that, if only for required, but looking at it, it looks like six or more would be required if we're going to count that basement accessibility or, or use of as a, an apartment. I'm confused.
Do you want to answer a question?
You want to address it?
Well, let's wait till the architect comes back up, he'll be the next witness, under circumstances, he can answer the question, I appreciate it.
So your architect is going to speak to your intent?
Well, he, he spoke to his intent. He said that he would like to be able to have the basement, or the ground floor, let me clarify that, used for his brother who's applying to this in the plan.
I think what he's asking is, is there going to be a separate dwelling unit in the basement of the property?
Absolutely not.
Isn't, is that what your question is?
I mean, I looked at the plan, it didn't call it that, right? It called it a storage space, if I'm not mistaken, from the plan that I saw that was submitted.
We have a revised plan, we're going to review with the board, then we have prints that we showed, which shows the basement as a finished space, he's going to use it for his brother.
Right. Why don't we wait till?
If you don't mind.
Next, it hasn't been sworn in. He'll come up next.
Okay, great.
And Mr. Diaz, maybe you can tell me what, what the layout of that basement's going to be so they can hear?
So as designed right now, there's, there's nothing.
May I give you some?
Sorry.
In that area, you'll hear us.
There's nothing, it's, it's made to be open space.
But you're going to build something down there, you're the, you're the developer, you're the builder, you have a plan, how are you going to lay it out?
So, so we, we did an ADA area, which, an ADA, with an ADA shower, an ADA area, just from a boat to be there.
It's a living space.
You have to, you have to address your concerns through the chair, let him, let him finish speaking, if you have a question, address it through me and you can ask whatever you like.
So, but that's subject to approval. If we don't get it approved, we should build a two-family home, that's it.
And I didn't understand your answer. What, what rooms are going to be in that lowest floor area?
There's going to be, I said, designed right now, there's going to be no rooms, it's an office space. We have additional design for an ADA living area, but it's just a room. If, if we don't get that approved through plan review, then it will just be...
Is there going to be a kitchen area or cooking facility there?
No.
There'll be a separate bathroom, that'll be an ADA?
Yes.
Will there be a bedroom area?
Uh, probably.
And just a question, I don't know how this board generally proceeds, but would you be willing to allow for periodic inspections to make sure that that wasn't a separate dwelling unit?
Absolutely accept the condition to that effect. And if the board does not see fit to allow the use of the ground floor for his brother, obviously, he would not be able to let his brother move in, he'd have to make other accommodations and rent to somebody else. So, he understands that that's not going to be approved the way it's designed, it's a two-family, but it's for, I believe he said, his mother and brother to live there.
Now, when you say to rent it out, you're talking about the first floor, not the ground floor?
No, not the ground floor, the first floor would be, he's not going to really rent it, it's his mother and his brother, he would rent out the second floor, so...
If his brother is, is your brother in a wheelchair?
Yes.
How would you be getting up to the first floor?
So, that's a good question. The, the spaces is designed, it's just to be two apartments, so obviously, if we can't get this ADA space approved, he will not live there, it's that simple. Because right now where he's living, it is an ADA compliant plate, so he would not get upstairs for the most part.
But in the plan, you haven't really shown an ADA space in the basement.
This is a revised plan.
You haven't, I believe.
That the, no, that the architect will put on record very shortly, as soon as he gets the testimony.
So then, your brother would be living in the ground-level apartment, and then you would have two other apartments rented?
His mother would be on the first floor, his mother, his mother and brother technically would be the first floor, with the brother spending most of his time in the basement. The mother would be bringing things down.
Ground level basement, first floor, second floor.
Yeah, but he said his brother would occupy the ground level, and the mother would be on the first floor and have the other floor, that sounds like a three-family. Because you could, you could, you know, I'm on this board many years and everybody always tells me my mother, sister, brother lives there, and once they get the approval, you do whatever you want, it's not conditioned on who rents it.
This is a, this is a, the only difference here is this is a situation where it's a mother who takes care of her son who's a quadriplegic. Different circumstance, but again, the board can say they don't want that, but that's the circumstance, it's not like it's going to be ten people in there.
I would love to see him accommodate his brother, why can't he just do a one-family home? Why he complicates the parking, the area, the footprint, the side yard, the rear yard?
So, so let me speak to that, okay, because I, I love when we get to this point. So, my brother needs a hundred percent assistance, okay, he can't leave on his own, okay, so if I'm able to build, and he needs a significant amount of money on a monthly basis to, to live, okay, so in my view, if I'm able to build a two-family home where we could offset a significant amount of the cost of the rent, then it's better for all of us. But if we can't do that, as a builder, I still want to build a two-family home because then I'll put them somewhere else, I'll find somewhere else to build an ADA compliant plate and then just get my two-family home here, because at the end of the day, I'm still running this.
Quick question, if, if you knew that you were going to build an ADA down in the basement for your brother, and you knew your mother was going to live on the first floor, why didn't you just have the first floor become ADA compliant?
Good question. So, when I acquired this, there was an application that had been denied, we didn't want to steer too far from what it was originally designed, okay, so again, when I believed at that time, we designed it just to get it approved, from the business point of view, but if we don't get this ADA space approved, they will not be living, because the, the whole reason of doing this is to have them there living comfortably. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the quadriplegia illness, it's, it's, this guy is six-one, two-hundred pounds, needs a hundred percent assistance. So, if I can't make this ADA compliant area, which that's the reason that we did not submit on our original plans, but we did have a completely revised plan for the ground floor, then we want to build a, a two-family home in compliance and just rent it out for two families and that's it.
How long do you own this property?
Six months, seven months.
Because I thought I remember the other applicant was going to build it for his sons.
Yeah.
Yeah, two sons, and he was building the other house for his sons.
Just so, just so we understand, if this were to be approved, my client will take any condition that if his brother doesn't live there, that ground floor will not be used at all for anybody whatsoever, then you want the back entrance closed out?
I understand.
Close out the back entrance.
I just have two questions, I didn't understand your answer to Mr. Vito's. Why didn't you just make the first floor, middle floor ADA compliant?
Because what, what happens is, the, this is basically a modification of the original plan that it was to met, to met a property, so we want to, from, from the business point of view, we wanted to increase our odds of getting our two-family approved, but as we find, I, I can't have this, this space open, I prefer not to have this space open, so...
What space open?
The, the ground level floor, so if I...
Like, what do you mean, you can't have it open?
Right now, it's empty, as, as it's designed right now, there's, there's nothing, no one will occupy that space. So, our intent is, we'll build a two-family home as it originally designed, if we do get our ADA approval, we'll, we'll have my brother there, if not, then it's based on...
And the other question that was asked is, how does he get from the ground level to the first floor?
So, for the most part, he would not.
How does he eat? But there won't be any kitchen facility or anything down there?
We're bringing the food downstairs.
I just, I just have a question for, for safety, and I, and I, my glasses, excuse me, so in the back, are there doors?
And the revised plan?
So, the revised plan, based on the, on the plan review from Belton Building Department, yes to that, yes.
Okay, good, I must see that.
Because it was not in...
Is there an elevator in the space floor?
No, no, because it's a, it's a ground level, it's, it's a ground level, so he would just go out.
So you will also build a shower downstairs, too?
ADA shower.
But regardless, approved or not, it's an empty floor. It would, it would be either or, if, if approved, it's ADA compliant, if it's not approved, it's an empty floor, so there would still have to be a condition.
It can be converted either way afterward, that's what you're saying, it's still going to be there no matter what.
I mean, I built a, a two-family and family, it didn't allow me to have doors as a way to...
Well, again, if the board does not want to allow for the ADA issue, we close off the back door and close off anything you want, close off stuff to show that there's not going to be use to the ground-level area, going to be a basement and that's it then, or a storage area.
Well, what do you want to put in an elevator for him? So he can get upstairs to be around your mother?
Your residential elevator?
Thirty thousand?
Three brothers.
Maybe another time.
This is a little, it, it, this is a little different than what we're used to seeing because the original two-family house has its own issues, and with, without any other, you know, variances of listings, you're putting a whole nother layer on with the basement.
We don't have to approve the basement, that's what the plan was submitted as.
As it was, I, I, you know, I, I understand your point of view, I'm saying, that's a whole nother layer, you have enough issues just with the two-family.
Well, Mr. Condi, there's one issue, insufficient width in the front yard, that's the issue, but I understand that if the board is not comfortable with using the ground level as part of the first floor parking for a mother and a quadriplegic son, then we're not going to go forward, we will just go forward with the two-family house.
And what's, is it fifty feet required or thirty-five feet required?
Fifty feet.
Because there's three different...
Frank, what was the thirty-five, it was a different zone?
No, it's in that zone, but that would be, I think, for townhouses. This is duplex, so this would fit, it would be two-family.
If you, if you remember, at, two months ago, or three months ago, whatever it was, it was the opinion, if I might, preliminary opinion, because everything was new, of my then-planner, George Williams, and Frank, that it would be a permitted use, and we therefore didn't go forward with the application that night. We thought that he could submit for approval.
Well, it's always been a permitted use, because of the zone that it's in.
But, but there's, besides being permitted, that it wouldn't require any approvals, any variances. Turned out that it does, based on the changes to the zoning ordinance. So, now, he's in here for a variance, for one variance, Tommy may disagree if he tells me, the rear yard fine, but as I see it, it's one variance, insufficient width of the front yard. Sufficient square footage, but insufficient width of the front yard.
Why don't we address that issue now, just so it's resolved, and I'd ask the zoning officer to comment on it as well. The ordinance says that the rear lot, when measuring it, is to use the shortest distance between the rear corner of the building and the sideline as the limit of the rear yard. So...
With, with that caveat, it, there's no variance, because you would measure, just so you could see, you would measure from here to that point, so there is, there's no variance.
Okay.
There's no rear yard variance.
And does the zoning officer agree with that interpretation?
I agree, I agree with that.
Okay. Just so we are on the same page.
So we're down to, we're down to one variance.
And what, what's changed from the original time you came before to now?
The opinion of Frank and the opinion of our planner, they both thought that there wouldn't be a requirement for a variance, that the new ordinance would allow for my client to go to the construction office and get building permits. As it turned out, he can't.
But if you could refresh my memory, the last time we, we turned this down?
Oh, no, 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 I had, I didn't have anything to do with that, but we have a record of what that was.
And what's the difference between that?
And there's a substantial change, there's a substantial change to the building from that time, and my architect will review each of those changes, including a parking variance at that time.
Right, yeah, the parking was like right in front of the door, you couldn't even open the front door all the way. That was terrible. Did you have another question?
I was just confused, if we're able to clarify that, did the dimension of the property change in the last four months or not?
Mr. Harris, was that for you, and I think you just explained the measurement of the side yard.
Whoever it was that was measuring at the wrong angle, was that the city guy or the?
No, it was, it was shown different on the plan, but if you read the new ordinance, it's, uh, he meets the rear yard. He meets the rear yard. He's got a really huge rear yard.
I live next door, that's why I'm concerned about it.
No, no, no. So, it's, it's not, it's not a factor. The only variance he has is the lot.
And the setback was okay? That's, that's what they, that doesn't need a variance anywhere either?
The rear yard setback.
The front setback to get the two cars.
He's okay there.
Yes. Any other questions at this witness?
From the public?
Yeah, the conference chair. Who lives in the house that's on the lot right now?
The previous owner.
It's not here.
You mean in the, on the, on the lot, the subdivided lot?
Right, right. Through the house, through the house there right now, right? And the previous owner living in there?
All right. There's no further questions at this witness. Do you want to proceed to your next witness?
Yes.
Raise your right hand. You've spent some money. You're about to give the truth, the whole truth and nothing but name and professional.
I'm Cedra. Last name is Cedra. As EDRA, licensed architect. And address is 115 North Spring Street, Longfield, New Jersey.
And what was your first name?
AY, A Y, M A.
Thank you.
Mr. Cedra, where do you maintain your practice?
At AS Architecture Design in 188 Ugarock Avenue, Roseland, New Jersey.
For what school did you graduate and what degree do you have?
I graduated from Egypt. I have a bachelor degree and I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
A member of any societies, professional groups connected with your work?
I'm a member with the AIA.
And have you testified previously for zoning boards and planning?
Well, except you, this doesn't explain.
Thank you, Mr. Cedra. Would you review the differences between this application and the application that was denied by this board a couple of years ago, I guess?
Sure. I got a printout that I'd like to distribute here for everyone.
Yeah, let's make it A1. Current, do you mark this?
Mark all of them.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the first sheet shows the site for both lots. And I'm gonna go over the differences between these two lots. The prior building coverage was 1,508 square feet. And that's 30%, and that's exactly the maximum allowed was, in the old code, was 3%. The proposed building coverage is 1,303 square feet, which is 25.5%. And the maximum allowed in the new code is 45%. The next line is the prior rear yard setback is 20 feet, 0.62 feet. And the proposed rear yard is 35.5 feet. And we're not applying for, for any variances for the rear yard. The prior application for the first and second floor bedrooms, the count was three bedrooms in each floor. And the proposed first and second floor bedrooms, the count, we only have two bedrooms. The next line is the proposed front yard was 21.83 feet and the proposed front yard is 24 feet. The prior parking in garage, we had only one parking spot inside the garage. And the proposed parking in garage is two parking spots. The next line is the proposed clearance from the side yard, the prior application was two feet. And the proposed is three feet. The proposed parking in driveway, the prior one used to have three, three spots. And the proposed one, we only have two spots. The prior curb cut is 16, sorry, the prior curb cut was 24 feet. And the proposed curb cut is 16 feet. This is the comparison between the two sides. When we flip to page, page two, we, we will see the difference between the, the elevations. For the, for the front elevation, we use different materials. For the prior application, we used the stone and stucco. And the roof was a shingle roof over the, the skirt roof on the, on the front. And for the proposed application, we're using stone. We're using James Hardy shingles and metal roofing for the front piece. The next line says prior application, we, we had a normal window at the front, a three-panel window. And the proposed application, we had a big window at the front. The front entry for the prior application, the entry was from the ground level. The entry to the building was from the ground level. The proposed application, we have the entry from the first floor. We have a, a set of stairs, exterior stairs that will take us to the first floor level. The prior application, we have eight-foot garage door. And the proposed, we have 16-foot garage door. And that's all the points and differences between the two, uh, two sites.
Mr. Cedra, in your opinion, is there substantial, very substantial difference between the previous application and the current application?
Yes, there is a substantial.
And is the current application a much more modest application? And does it also comply with parking and have less of a curb cut?
That's correct.
Would you? Would you describe the existing site?
First, I wanna handle this out. This is the revision that was applied to the plan after we submitted the plans. And these sheets shows bubbles.
All right, so then before, what, what he wants to do before describing the site, I think it's better if you describe the site first and then hand out the plans, okay? Just describe the existing site.
The existing site, it's a vacant plan.
And then you wanna hand out the proposal, which is changed?
Board secretary will do that for you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is it all right if you put some board on the?
Sure.
Easy. Thank you. Cedra, would you go ahead and review the changes from the original plan that was submitted?
Sure. The changes are just in the first sheet here.
Can I mark this in great?
Just, just, you gave us an exhibit that has three sheets. We'll just refer to it as sheet one, sheet two, and sheet three, A2.
So, sheet one, that shows the site plan. And it shows also the zoning analysis. The changes, there was a tile in the rear yard, so we changed that. And now the rear yard setback is 35, uh, 35 feet, 0.5. And that shows on the, on the left side here on the side. And under that, also, we changed the entry to this building from, um, the previous one was going from the ground level. So, we built up an exterior stair. And this way, we can, uh, get to this building from the first, the first floor level. That's the second change. And the third change, which applies to the zoning table, because the, the previous drawing didn't show the, the most updated zoning table. Now, we're, we're showing the zoning table that follows the RC duplex.
And would you review the changes at the ground level?
Sure. The changes, the next sheet shows the, the first drawing on the left shows the ground level, which at the front of the building, we have the two-car garage. And at the backside, we have a family room, wetbar area. We have a handicap accessible bathroom and a closet. And also, we have the laundry room that services the first floor apartment. And in this area, in this back area, there is also a separate set of staircase that only links the first floor. It's only made for the first floor. And also, there is a door in the back of the, back of the room, by the family room area.
Any other changes from the previous?
No, no other change. And again, the, the staircase changed at the front.
Then would you generally describe the interior of the first floor of the proposed building?
Sure. The first floor consists of five rooms. We have a living room and eating area. And also, we have kitchen, two bedrooms with their own closets, study room. And, um, and we have a whole bathroom in this level. Again, the staircase that links the ground level exists on that floor.
Now, there's a concern by board members and an interested citizen with regard to the study. What have you done to ensure the study will not be used as a bedroom?
The study does not have a closet, just four walls.
And how about the entrance? Can the entrance be made wider or something like that to assure?
I have a door on the entrance now, but I can open up this wall completely to make it like an open, like open space.
So, you could open it up without a door and have a wider entrance in order to assure anybody that that would not be used as a bedroom?
Correct.
And no closets within that room?
No closet in that room.
Is the second floor, can it be exactly the same? Can that be done on the second floor also?
Correct. And the second floor also, the layout for the second floor matches the first floor except for the staircase. We don't have a staircase on the second floor, but we do have a, a larger room on the second floor.
And would you describe the proposed exterior of the building?
Proposed exterior of the building, can, can I rely on this printer?
All right, let's mark that. Counselor A3?
A3.
Okay, the exterior of, of the building, should I turn it? Okay, the exterior of, of the building, we have two-inch cultural stone at the, at the ground level and the first floor. And the cultural stone is terminated with this skirt roof on top, which is roof with the metal roof. And the second floor, um, the second floor walls for the front, it's made out of James Hardy shingles. And, um, and that, all these materials only applied at the front of the building. The two sides and the back, we only have vinyl siding on those two sides and the back of the building. And the roof, obviously, it's a, it's a shingle roof, the nail roof, I mean. It's asphalt shingle roofing.
I have no further questions at this witness, Mr. Chairman.
I, I have one question. Your square foot, you said, was 1,303 square feet? Does that include any space on the ground level floor?
That's the footprint of the building. This number is the footprint of the building.
What's the total square footage of the unit this is?
The unit is 1277.
1277?
Yeah.
And what was the?
The rest was the covered entry at the front.
The total square footage of all three floors is?
Ah, the total for all three?
Yeah.
No. The total for all three is, uh, 1,277 per floor times three is 3, 3,831. And that also includes the area of the garage.
And what was the, the prior square footage?
The prior one was in the small sheet. It was, the, the floor was 1,508. So, it was more by about 200 square feet.
For the floor, it was only two floors, all right?
It was the same. It was three floors. It's smaller by 600 square feet.
And 200 square feet on, 200 square feet on the footprint?
Yes.
The prior application was also three floors?
It was three floors. But only had one garage, uh, one-car garage.
So, how did you get two cars in a one-car garage?
Uh, I made the entry a little bit smaller.
So, it fits, can, it can fit two cars in there?
It, it can.
Driveway tucks?
Yes.
It's a standard garage door, 18, uh, 15 feet?
Any other question? How's it gonna fit in?
Yeah, the question, yeah. When you get the two cars, then you try to open the door to get out.
I mean, the garage size is 18-foot line and the inside by 20-foot, 10 and a half. So, 18-foot, 18-foot is more than enough for two cars. Especially, we don't have any columns. There's no columns in the middle.
Yeah, I mean, so listen, the, the problem that I see is that we have, we have four parking spaces, basically. So, we're asking for, and the studies, there's still the bedrooms that were there before. You changed the name, got rid of the, the closet. It's still a room. It's still a space that can be occupied by a person, which is gonna create a car. Whether he uses that or the person after uses that, the same with the, the basement thing. And I don't mean to, you know, not have a feeling towards your brother, but it's not about your brother. It's about who comes after that. Because once it's built, it's there. And we don't have the space on that lot to create the parking that, the way that the house is designed right now needs. We have enough room for four spaces. This house, the way it's set up, needs six or seven spaces. We don't have it. So, it's much, so much as not being able to do it.
Can I open the study completely and use it as a dining room? Because this house only has small.
As a master bedroom. You can turn that whole space into a walk-in closet and another bathroom. Now you have two bathrooms, two bedrooms. I think it's a much more valuable and desirable home. And it can never be used as anything else.
My client finds that acceptable.
Lawrence, you have a question?
I also have a problem with the parking. I've actually visited the property and parking is pretty tight throughout the whole street. But even besides the parking, it might be totally irrelevant. There's a beautiful cherry blossom tree right in front where they proposed the curb cut. Is that just gonna be cut down and not created?
Can a tree be moved? Can a new tree be planted? Two minutes.
Another question. The age of the house as it sits today is what?
It's an empty lot.
Oh, it's an empty lot. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
The house on it's like a big lot, subdivided, they should want to build another. When I first went by it, I couldn't find a lot. I was like, where's the size?
It's so incredibly small.
It doesn't look like an.
It's a civil size to the lots on either side of it.
Like I said, when I drove by, I'd like get out of the car and like read the number and say, where, where was this empty lot? Cause it doesn't appear to be an empty lot. It's like a, like a mixed side yard, I imagine.
The lots on the street are mixed in size. So, there are 50 by 100, there are 35 by 100. The 35 in that area are normally one-family homes.
And we were just concerned about the two cars in the garage. You feel like you could, if the, the car pulls in first to the left, that the, the car on the right can fit, get into the garage?
As I said, what's good about this space, we don't have a column in the middle. If we have a column, that would be a different story, because you have to lift clearance from the column. But now, they can park comfortably with no problem.
And that's the average size of, of a garage? That fit two cars?
Yeah. That's the minimum size of a, of a garage.
Is that not a standard manufactured two-car garage door?
Yeah, this, this is a standard door, correct. It's a 16-foot door. But I, I also showed a template for the, for the, for the nine-by, uh, nine-by-19 parking inside the garage. And you see it. It's, it fits inside. It's shown in the drawing.
I have a couple of questions. You say it's a standard door, but the size of a garage isn't related to the size of the door, correct? You could put a standard door up, but you could have three feet on each side of that door. You could have one foot or two feet.
Well, yeah. I mean, 16-foot is a standard size.
That's a different question. That's a different answer. I'm just saying, the size of the door doesn't govern the size of the car or how many cars you can fit.
Well, how wide is the area within the building for the garage, for the cars to park? How wide is that?
The area is 18-foot nine.
It's three feet wider, almost three feet wider than the door.
Okay. That was just a side question. I have a couple of serious questions. You said that the first floor and second floor were basically identical?
Except for the stairs.
Except for the stairs?
And the laundry.
And that was my question. There's a laundry on the upper floor, but there's no laundry on the first floor?
Stairs and the laundry. Uh, actually, the laundry in the second floor, Colak, took the space of the stair, that, the space that was allocated for the stair in the first floor.
Right, I can, I can see that on the plan.
I mean, uh, you can also see the rooms, they have the same dimensions.
So, is it the intention that the basement laundry would have to be used by the occupant of that first floor?
Correct.
Okay. You also show a wet bar area in the basement. What is, what is that for? Is that for the brother who's handicapped to use the wet bar?
Just a counter with the sink. Doesn't have anything else.
It's a counter with a sink?
That's it.
So to turn that into a kitchen, you just have to add a stove?
Yeah, yeah. Then you have to add stove, gas line.
Okay. I have no other question.
Does any other members of the board have questions for this witness?
Um, I'm sorry, my question about the tree was never answered.
The tree, the tree is right where the driveway is.
I know.
Yeah, I thought he did answer it, sorry.
So it'll have to be removed or something? Are you gonna plant another one?
I'm sure he'd be happy to plant another one, that's not an issue.
I think Mr. Conti wanted two.
And if the board proves his condition, I'll be planting another cherry tree. There's no objection.
Okay.
If no other members of the board have questions to this witness, does anybody in the public have questions for this witness? I've seen hands raised before. Victor Mafucci, sixty-one Continental. The paint area outside the garage doors, where the other two cars were parked, how wide is that?
Twenty-four, about twenty-eight by... By nineteen.
How big is it?
I'm sorry.
Doesn't the plan show seventeen foot ten inch?
No, the, 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 it shows here twenty, twenty-eight point one-two to the start of the, the stair. And also, I have another, maybe like another five feet.
No, you gotta check that, that can't be. Property's thirty-five feet wide.
No, that's, uh, you're asking about the width or the length?
Width.
Ah, the width, okay. The width says the two, we have nine and nine, that's eighteen plus a foot, nineteen, nineteen foot six.
Doesn't it show seventeen foot ten to the edge of the refuse area?
That's to the edge of the house. Where, where's that number?
Oh, okay.
I have, I have a template for the parking spot. It shows nine by nineteen, and there is a space between both, both, uh, spots, about a foot. And also, there is another six inches to, to reach the stair. So this, the, the, the width is about nine plus nine, that's eighteen, nineteen foot six, nineteen foot six. That's the whole width from the stair to the edge, to the curb.
So how far past the house is the driveway?
About two foot.
You only have three feet?
I have three feet. Three feet.
And you, you have only three feet of a side yard, don't you?
No, we have five.
So you have five feet on the side, and you're gonna have three feet of it as driveway. So that means the car will be two feet off the property line?
Well, it's three feet of the property line.
So when you open the door, it'll be in my driveway?
My question is, if you open the doors, can you get out?
There is about three foot six from the car to the end of the property line. From the parking spot, not from the car. Parking is nine by nineteen.
The driveway, you said, comes three feet past the house, and you have a five-foot?
Two foot past the house.
Two foot? And you have five foot setback, so you're three feet?
Five foot setback.
So you're three feet from the next property?
Yeah. Three feet haven't changed.
And that does not require, uh, a variance?
No. I lived on that street, my driveway is right up to the property line.
The plan also shows asphalt that looks like it encroaches over onto the adjacent property, is that true? That dotted line, is that what that is?
That's the neighbor's.
No, that's, um...
That's the neighbor's driveway?
Yeah, the asphalt ends here. It's three foot away from the property line.
So there's, there's no current asphalt there now?
No, it's just grass.
Vic? I'll clarify what I was trying to get at. As you look at the house, if the car on the right aligns with the garage doors, would passenger be able to open his door, or would he hit the steps?
Well, we, we have, the whole spot is nine feet. That doesn't mean the car is nine feet. Any car is not nine feet.
I know that.
So you have enough room. I mean, what's the standard size of the, the, any car?
Six feet.
Six feet? You got three feet, one foot six from this side, one foot six from this side, plus, plus another six inches. You have two feet to, before you hit the stair. I think that's, that's reasonable.
Two feet from the?
From the car, where you park, to the stairs. You have two feet. Isn't that enough to open a, a door? I think that's enough.
No, it's not.
It's not.
So I, I, what about the wheelchair?
Go ahead, Tom.
I, I just have a question on parking. So if you have this, uh, apartment building, you have your first floor and a second floor. When you divide your parking up, are you gonna have parking for, uh, residents on the first floor? Your family on the first floor, one, two, in the garage, and out? Because honestly, let's call it like it is. I, I have a garage, I have the, I have a driveway, and I park my cars, and we own them all, in a way to where when we get out from there. Right? But when you have a tenant that's up there and you can't get out, now they're gonna park on the street. And then that's just gonna create more parking, no parking on the street. So I'm just, is there a plan for that kind of stuff? Because I know how I shuffle them with regards to my neighbors in my driveway. So I'm just trying to see how it works.
Well, the cars would be, the first floor would have two spaces, and the second floor would have two spaces.
One in the garage, one outside, one in the garage, one outside.
Okay, that, that's what, and that's what I'm trying to say to you, because like if it's, if it's not...
Big enough.
If it's not in front of, if, if, if I don't own the car, if I'm on the second floor, if, if I'm the, uh, the renter, and I'm in a garage and I'm in, behind it, I have the, I can move them accordingly. But then, you know how it is, if you're parking outside, you can't, so they're not gonna park in the street. And then I'm gonna take away from my, my, my neighbors and my other things. I was just asking that question.
Go ahead, Ms., do you have a question?
That was my concern, the door.
State attorney, please.
Elizabeth Lonaker, one oh five Walther.
Thank you.
Right, adjacent to the street. How is, how are two separate families sharing one door? That's what I don't understand. Sharing one garage? Why don't we have two separate garages? That's the part that's confusing me, it just doesn't make any sense. I've seen a garage door like that, but on a one-family house, not on a two-family house. So I don't understand the parking either.
Well, you could share a door. Just because it's one door, what, for, for sharing the space?
Like, and how we sharing the space, it just seems like it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
I also think if they have, if they have two separate spaces, private separate spaces, I think it's more likely that that garage is gonna turn into storage. They really wanna have a spot.
It's gonna be impossible to.
The, the way I look at it, that's why. Parking is wide. Who's talking about?
Yeah.
A requirement of four spaces, and we have four compliant spaces.
And we're just trying to see if you truly have four spaces. That's, we're talking about a foot and a half to open the door, I mean, we'll get to it when we're done.
I think he said two feet to open the door. And I don't think these driveways are different than most other two families that are built with the garage and the space behind it. There's nothing unique about them. It's a typical house being put up. Similar to houses I remember, uh...
Yeah.
Somebody else putting up.
But we built them to comply. We built our side yards to comply, because we had the width, and we built our rear yards to comply. If you had a little more width, then the garage could be a little bigger, the space could be a little bigger, and then it would be more practical for the flow of traffic. Because you're confined on the lot, and you're seeking a, a variance for the side yard, it's squeezing that garage down, it's squeezing that space down. If you were a resident on that street, I could see why you'd be concerned. Practically speaking, this is really tight. If somebody shows up first and parks a spot, the other car's not even gonna get past them to get in the garage, because you have returns. It's tight, you gotta admit that it's tight.
Mr. Conti, if you ride there, and I'm sure you did, and take a look at the width that he houses adjacent to on either side, it's the same size. They're the same-sized houses, and we're not talking about something different that already exists there.
I wouldn't say that it doesn't even comply. It, it, practically speaking, it may not look like it complies, but it may comply.
This, this is a lot that's five thousand plus square feet, completely compliant. We've got one issue, the width of the property. It's a big lot, it's a normal-sized lot, probably big enough on that street, and it's similar to the lots right around it. We're not talking about something different. We're not doing, and this is a permitted use, we're not looking for a variance for the use. It's, it, the issue here could be, you don't want the, uh, ground floor used, that's fine. My client accepts that, then he will not be able to have his mother and quadruplets' brother live there. He, he accepts that. But this is, in my opinion, a good application with regard to what is there. There's a two-family, there's, I think of the houses adjacent to it, maybe one of them is a one-family, the rest are two-families. We're not talking about anything different.
Was there something great proved on this lot?
It's not true.
They came before, uh, two or three years ago, we voted it down.
Was there a one-family on the lot, or?
Mr. Conti, it was, no, it was two-family.
It was two, the one that we saw was two.
Yeah, it was two, two-family with, they, they have it on here, the, the prior, it says. We've got three bedrooms.
Yeah, so you give it...
Now we have two bedrooms with it then.
Was there a prior one-family approval on this lot?
Yes, there was.
That's right.
At the time, it was subdivision.
How many, how many bedrooms is in that?
How many bedrooms and what was approved?
In the one bed, in the one-family.
I, I didn't handle it.
I'm just assuming it's gonna be three.
And I don't know all the details of how many bedrooms there were in.
I'm just saying, if we do a one-family, we're gonna get three or four bedrooms. If we do a two-family, we're gonna get three or four bedrooms. Yeah. So either way, we're gonna get, we're gonna need the same space.
Mr. Bander, we're willing to make it clearly two bedrooms by expanding the size of the bedroom as you have asked, so that there's no way there's gonna be three bedrooms.
I'm just discussing it with them. It was in two thousand and seven, according to the notes I had, that a one-family was approved.
I, I don't...
I, I still am not, um, understanding if the ordinance is a net amount of parking spaces, or just like how many we can get on the property. Because like we said, he made the, the curb cut smaller, but if a car pulls up to each end of that driveway, which will happen? I live on the street, parking is terrible there. Like, there are people parked from around the corner in the apartment building, and, you know, there's, um, by taking those two spots off of the street and adding four on the property, we're still only netting two parking spots out of it.
If we built, if anything was built there, that would happen.
And if it was a one-car driveway, we'd only be losing one car off the street, so we would net three.
Not necessarily, because it, the, the cut is sixteen feet, that's one car. If the cut were ten feet, it's still one car.
Fleetwood, but not the cars that are parking on our street nowadays.
You don't get two spots. That, listen, you can't, you, you could address any, uh, project that way. He needs a curb cut.
He doesn't work, that I'm saying, what impact the power will be calling.
To me, that's not that bad.
Well, that's what I mean, if you do, if you do a single family, you, you can do the one curb cut, but you're still gonna get four bedrooms. You're gonna pump more cars back out on the street anyway, you're still gonna lose those two spots, whether it be on the street or off the street.
I, I also didn't understand the answer to the, um, the change in the coverage of the lot. Did that apply to the, the, you said it's only twenty-five percent coverage on the lot now, within the, within the dem plants?
Looks like they shrunk it, right? You shrunk the original plan?
Well, the building coverage now that allowed is forty-five percent. We are at twenty-five, twenty-five percent. So we are below the allowed.
We're substantially below that.
Yeah, substantially.
And we're, and, uh, original studies, we're now not calling them studies anymore, they're, what are they?
We will make it part of, uh, one of the bedrooms, and we're gonna make it like a master suite.
It's gonna be a bathroom.
Studios are eliminated.
Gone.
If it's approved, the condition would be that that study...
But this is still gonna be essentially a studio basement on the first floor, so that, not to be, not to sound harsh, but if like, at some time or another, the brother or the mom are moved out of the house, and we're still left with the three doors in the back door.
Again, I, I indicated we would be willing to remove that part of the request, and just ask for a two-family, not have a rear door, not have a bathroom in the basement. Just use it for storage and garage.
So the only condition is, is the side yard, and whether we fill the parking is, is, is that out? If you remove the study, if you remove the basement, we're back to a two?
We will do both.
Right, we're back to a two, if we move a two?
Yeah.
No study, right?
Remove the study, make it a large master bath, remove the request for the basement, close the rear door, take the bathroom away, and leave it as a two-family.
That's the cherry tree.
The cherry tree, I can do nothing about.
So you will plant one.
We'll re-plant one, yes, absolutely.
Mr. Sheldon?
Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Flood Street. I just want a little clarification on the driveway, because my understanding, these two cars will be parked in front of this building. If I heard the number correctly, there's only seventeen feet of space in the front for...
The width?
No, I'm talking about the depth.
The depth, no, we, we have, we have big depth.
Because I thought I heard you say seventeen feet.
Yeah, the depth, uh...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight plus another four feet, so that's twenty, thirty-two feet from the property line to the garage door, to the start of the garage doors. That's thirty-two feet.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear about that, because in recent council meetings, to his credit, uh, Mr. Graziano has been championing eliminating all of the, uh, cars that, uh, eventually every night wind up parking across sidewalks, forcing pedestrian traffic out to the street. So I just wanted to make sure that that was in order. Thank you.
So what does that set the house back off of the curb?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, well, the, the front entry of the house, the covered entry of the house is at twenty-four feet from the property line.
That's the front, the, the covered way, or the door itself?
The, the covered, the, the portico. The covered portico is at twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet from the front of the portico, or from the door?
From the front of the portico to the, to the property line.
Can they ever see the portico? They see pictures?
I didn't get a plan, so.
Are they looking, are they looking?
You want to show us, show us.
I was just wondering, like, how much farther is that gonna be back off the curb than all the other houses?
There's a ten-foot right away, at the townhouse, so it's an additional ten feet from face of curb back to where our property line is.
Sure, okay.
Is it close to align with the other houses, that, is the thing that we're asking?
Doesn't look anything like anything on the block.
You couldn't possibly be and park cars in front of it. It would be a good car length, or, what do we call it now, seventeen feet, back farther than the rest of the houses on the street.
I mean, the next door house, I have a drawing for the next ha- next door house. And the next door house is sit in the front of the, I mean, it's, uh, I think that the front yard sits back of the next door house. I would say about twelve feet. And that's the line that I have, yeah.
You're looking about twice that far with this?
So we're going even...
Deeper.
Right, deeper.
We're going deeper, yeah.
And I, and I think even if we had a single-family home that was already approved, I think that it'd end up the same issue, because they'd still wanna build the same way with the garage. I don't know if there's any way escaping, you know?
Sure, absolutely. Any other, uh, people?
I'm sorry, one last question.
That's all right.
School seven, the elementary school that is serviced by that neighborhood, is at capacity. So what is common, potential new students come out of that house into that school? And does that matter to anybody who doesn't send a kid to that school?
If it's a bill, if, if it was approved for a one-family, I mean...
With four kids. It'd be more likely they get kids out of this.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're more likely to have children in a one-family.
I think the good thing about having two bathrooms on each floor, and this is just through experience being a landlord, you're more likely to get two roommates that are willing to pay a better price for the unit, so, and that'll mitigate the chance of getting...
Back your cars.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Any other questions from the audience? If not, Mr. Gassion, you have another witness?
Yes, I do. Mr. Stimel.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and professional address.
William Stimel, S-D-I-M-N-E-L. My professional address is P.O., Box 280, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Mr. Stimel, what is your occupation?
I'm a licensed engineer and planner with a particular background in traffic engineering as well.
And you are also a licensed planner of the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, and my license is current.
Mr. Chairman, I submit that Mr. Stimel is licensed, he's only testifying right now as a planner, but he's licensed in the field of engineering also.
Mr. Chairman, as an expert.
Thank you. Would you review the existing site from a planning standpoint?
Certainly, the existing site is a vacant property with an area of 5,026.8 square feet. It's a four-sided parcel, but a bit irregularly shaped. The front angles of the property are square to the street line, but the rear angle of the property intersects at about a 45-degree angle, and it ultimately meets the street line. Site is currently undeveloped, as the board members know. It's located in the RC zone, which allows a variety of uses, but primarily is focused towards residential uses, notably, single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, three-family dwellings, and townhouse dwelling units, as well as age-restricted and assisted living facilities. Based on that, the applicant is proposing to construct a two-family residence on the property, the two-family residence is a permitted use.
Would you review the variance that the board is confronted with on this application?
Certainly, and I'm gonna approve you both the letters prepared by Mr. DiLorenzo and Mr. Harretts. They cited the same two variances. The first is for minimum lot width, where... Right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about that. The minimum lot width where 50 feet is required, 34.5 feet is existing and proposed. That lot width is an existing condition, nothing that happens tonight is gonna change the width of the property, and the properties on either side are developed at present. The second variance was recited, and Mr. Gassion had spoken about it before, was for the minimum rear setback, where 25 feet are required and 35.5 feet are proposed. Due to, like I said, discrepancy, if you wanna cause that with the plan that had been previously submitted, they showed the rear setback measurement going on an angle through the adjoining property, which is not the correct way to measure it, let's say, but it's been corrected, it's shown 35.5 feet, which does meet the ordinance required, requirement. So we're down to one C variance with relation to the existing property and the proposed residence that the applicant is intending to construct.
Do you have any further comments with regard to conclusions as from a planning standpoint?
Certainly, as the board members all know, the applicant has to show that the positive and negative criteria have been satisfied in order to justify granting the requested variance relief. There's two different ways of approaching the positive criteria. For C variance, the first is the C1 hardship variance, where in cases of hardship, such as exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific piece of property, it doesn't necessarily mean that the property couldn't be developed in another manner, it just means that the hardship is, in this case, an existing condition based on the dimensions of the lot, and limits the extent to which it could be developed. Obviously, that existing lot width requirement is there, the lot width isn't changing, it merely becomes a variance because of the fact that the applicant is proposing a two-family residence on the property. Should be noted that both of the side yard setback requirements are met based on the updated ordinance, so even though the lot width is substandard, the setback variances have been satisfied. The second way to justify the positive criteria is through the C2, the flexible C variance, where the purposes of zoning would be advanced, and the benefits derived from granting variance would outweigh any detriment. And without belaboring the point, I found three purposes in municipal land use law that were advanced by the application. The first is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. The second purpose is purpose C, which is to provide adequate light, air, and open space. And the third purpose is purpose D, which is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to developing in persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions. Certainly, this is a two-family zone, the applicant is on a conforming lot, the general, there's not a density requirement per se in the RC zone, but if you look at the standards from one-family, two-family, and three-family, it does require 2,500 square feet per unit for residential properties, and we comply with that. Again, we're a little over 5,000 square feet, we're proposing two dwelling units. In addition, the 2009 master plan and the 2019 master plan reexamination both comment on the existing housing stock in the municipality, and talk about the fact that the majority of the housing stock in the township is too older, does not meet modern standards in terms of size, design, and amenities. Talks about encouraging redevelopment to provide a variety of housing types for different households. So I think, based on both municipal land use law and the master plan and reexam from the township of Belleville, I believe that the C2 criteria has been satisfied. And then finally, as with all variances, the applicant has to show that the negative criteria has been satisfied as well, that there's no detriment to the public good, and there is no impairment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Again, this is a conforming use, it's proposed at the desired density, it applies with the setback requirements, it applies with the coverage requirements. The project architect has testified, too, they reduced the size of the project from the prior application, they eliminated the parking variance, they eliminated the side yard setback variance. The applicant has also heard the comments from the board, and has agreed to make some changes to the plan, is willing to eliminate the study area as recommended by one of the board members, and create a larger master bedroom suite, for lack of a better term, he's agreed to close the rear door at ground level, he's agreed to remove the ADA bedroom, and he also agreed to plant a replacement cherry tree, and move the one that's going to be cut down to provide the driveway. So for all those reasons, I believe the applicant has provided sufficient justification for the board to grant the requested variance relief. Again, it's just that one variance related to the lot width, and I think hopefully they've shown that they're willing to work with the board in terms of the site plan comments, and hopefully the board is satisfied with those amendments.
I'll just say, no further questions, Jim.
Any board members have questions this week? Anybody in the public have a question this week? Thank you. Does anybody in the public have any comments at this time, before we close out the public portion? Mr. Sheldon?
As many people in the audience swear...
We have to swear you in if you're testifying now. Raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address.
Michael Sheldon, 47th Flood Street.
Thank you.
Like many members of the audience, we have some real concerns about the logistics of the parking situation. We all understand that the driveway, the door is standard 16 feet, the interior of the garage is 19 feet, but I'm just trying, as this has been alluded to by several board members, the practical nature of parking. If the first person going into the driveway to take advantage of the open, into the garage, takes advantage of the open space, they park their car at the midline, that leaves even that much less space for the second car to enter into the driveway. But even more so, when they pull out, they're gonna have to angle, wiggle out to get through the garage door opening. So the question arises, the structure on both sides of the garage, are those load-bearing columns? And if a car should clip one of the columns on either side of the garage door, is that gonna compromise the structural integrity of the front of the building? You have to, you know, long-term, you know, year in, year out, people moving back and forth inside this garage, accidents happen, and if a car should, in the process of meandering to get out of that driveway, which admittedly is a constricted space, if a car should hit either side of that garage opening, is that going to cause massive damage to the front of the building? Because it looks to my eye, granted, I'm not a mechanical engineer, I only have degrees in physics, but to my eye, it looks like that garage door is part of a load-bearing wall, the whole front of the building is going to have its load transferred to whatever headers are above that garage door opening. So what happens if either side of that garage door should be clipped?
Sure, the architect can answer, but they're, they're like block, solid block, right?
Yes, we have a CMU wall filled with concrete all the way up to the top.
I mean, solid, solid, solid concrete.
It's not just timber, right?
You're not gonna manage that too easily.
All right, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the, in the public? Go ahead.
I just want to say one thing.
Could we just swear you in, please? State your...
Raise your right hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Lauterco, 105 Ballford Place.
Raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, of course, I just wanted to make the comment of, the comment is that as that picture stands, the way that car is parked, when that door opens completely, it would be in my driveway. So if I were to finish my fence all the way to the front of my home, that vehicle would not be able to open its door completely.
Thank you.
That was all, thank you.
Mr. Gassion, before the board deliberates, I just want to go over a couple of conditions.
I want to sum up a couple.
Okay, well, I'll ask you the question, and then you can include the answer in your summation.
Go ahead.
The, as I understood it, the conditions that the board was concerned is, number one, they were concerned about a tree, and you're going to replace that...
Replace the tree that's going to be removed.
Right. Number two, they want the study removed and converted to a portion of the master bedroom, and would you agree that the plan would be revised and submitted to the board engineer for his review to determine whether it complied with the intent of the board?
Absolutely.
And the final one is, and I think this was a major concern of the board and the public, is that they want to make sure it's gonna be a two-family dwelling and not a three-family dwelling, and you mentioned that you would be willing to have periodic inspections performed to confirm that it was not, but, let me finish. The concern, and I've dealt with this in many other situations, is that if the property is sold, the new owner isn't going to even be aware of the existence of that condition, so I would ask that it be a restrictive covenant in the deed so that the property couldn't be sold without someone knowing that.
I have no problem.
Thank you.
Sum up, and I'll try to make a quick. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, obviously, the first issue that we addressed was the Ray Giudica, and there are clearly substantial changes from, for this, from the previous application. We're dealing with the permitted use. This is a two-family zone, this is a two-family use. It was a confusing ordinance, and my client waited two months because of issues with the misunderstanding of the ordinance, and I understand that for sure, because there's been so many changes. We have adequate square footage, there's more than 5,000 square feet. The adjacent lots are similar in size to this, and similar in use, and similar in height to the proposal. This is gonna be an aesthetically pleasing building. Directly to the rear of this property is the golf course. The, and a couple of cases, just for the record. In a variance context, context of which you consider whether the structure proposed is so unusually large that its size, rather than unique condition in the property, caused a need for the variance, that's not the case here. The setback, everything complies except for the one thing, the width of the property. Another case, Lang 116, New Jersey 56, you're entitled to build a house that's comparable to surrounding houses, and that's what we have here. Now, as to the conditions my client's willing to agree to, ground floor, rear door eliminated, bathroom eliminated, so that there's no risk that anybody could convert. Council wants a restriction in the title that says the property can be inspected by the zoning officer to ensure that there's compliance and the basement is not used as additional living accommodation. My client has no problem with that. The bedrooms, there will be two bedrooms, the room that's shown as a den will be added on to a bedroom. Again, the plan will be revised for review by the engineer and the zoning officer to make sure they, it's clear that it's two bedrooms, not a den, not a building, and not a room that could possibly be used to expand. Cherry tree that's coming down will be replaced. I think that, I think that comes...
The only thing to be very specific on that is that that room that's being added to the other bedroom, that specifically has another bathroom and a closet.
Two bedroom, two bath?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. The master, there'll be a bathroom, and then a bathroom in the master bedroom, is what you're saying, yes?
Correct.
That's acceptable.
So to clarify, if we...
I thought I clarified.
Well, you, I'm not sure that the board understands, are we allowing this first-floor level livable space behind the garage, or are we not?
It's not a livable space.
But we're eliminating all the plumbing, we're eliminating everything.
The washroom, the bathroom, the door.
Just Mr. Harretts or something, I'm sorry.
I think the only thing that's gonna remain to a plumbing is the washroom.
Well, the, the, yeah.
And then with the, the mechanical stuff.
Now, I just noticed something that maybe could help the parking a little bit. In the original plan, the entrance was on the first floor, and the stairway was inside.
Well, the architect would...
So the front step is small. If it was, if you went back to that design, you would gain width in the driveway, at least the door could open where the stairs would be. Now, the, the structure of the stairs kinda narrows the driveway.
Yes, I understand, actually, the only issue with this is the egress, because to do it with the entrance on the ground level, we have to have a sprinkler system, because that changed the group type from R5 to R3, which it would require a sprinkler system.
Got you, got you. I have nothing further. I thank the board for their attention. I've obviously summed up, my client's willing to accommodate, to try to get this screwed up.
Did we talk about the tree?
Yeah, we got a tree.
We got a tree, okay. Two beautiful cherry blossom trees.
Just wanna make sure we're clear with all the conditions? Correct, our stenographer, whatever, we got them all listed?
Yes.
I have them all.
Great. Well, at this time, does someone want to make a motion for approval of this application with all the restrictions or things that we, conditions that we included?
I'm motion approval.
Please call the roll. Green?
Yep. Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mr. Zangary?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Mr. Bold?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Ms. Wong?
Yes.
And Ms. Rico?
Yes.
I won't call the rest, because that's nine votes, that's what I'm...
Thank you for your time, Mr. Ken.
At this time, we're gonna take a short 10-minute recess and give our stenographer a break. Meeting is called back in order. The second application we have is PB 2914, 701 Main Street, Block 1, 001, Block 2, Enterprise HVAC Supply. The application is seeking final site plan approval for deviation from the original site plan approved by the planning board in 2017 regarding a second-story addition canopy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Maria Rivera, I represent the applicant. This is a, this is a modification to the site plan that was previously approved to make a minor change to the site plan. The prior site plan had a canopy to the front of the building, that this, this building is essentially a warehouse that also has manufacturing done on the premises. It does not have a loading dock, and the purpose of this canopy was that when they are loading and unloading, primarily to protect from the elements, that they would have this area where they could unload, and it wouldn't snow and or raining on them and on the merchandise if they were doing it. They found themselves in a situation where, yes, the canopy was fine, however, sometimes they weren't able to get things out of the way as quickly as they would like to, and actually, the code enforcement called it to their attention and actually fined them and said, hey, it's becoming unsightly that you have all this merchandise here in the front of the building, and you're not getting it out of the way as quickly as we would like to, and hit them with a fine on two occasions. They did pay the fine, as being citizens, and actually, it was part of my settlement negotiations with the code enforcement officer, that we told them we would attempt to have this site plan modified by asking the board to permit us to cover with some aesthetic way, to be able to shield the merchandise that was being loaded or unloaded from being seen from the street, so that it would be more appealing. And that is the application that is before this board this evening, where basically what we are looking to do is to build underneath a canopy, close off two parts of that with a wall that would shield from view from the street, the temporary loading and unloading that is taking place, so that it's not visible on the street. The two witnesses that we've been testifying... The two witnesses that will be testifying this evening are Mr. Gonzalez, who is the owner of the building and of the business that is operating in this, and his engineer, Mr. Biddet, who has prepared the site plan for this evening. So, I would like to call, as my first witness, Mr. Deppa Gonzalez.
Good evening, would you raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your name and address.
Mr. Gonzalez, this day may report for the fifth meeting.
Mr. Gonzalez, you are the owner of 701 Main Street, which owns the property located at 701 Main, 701 Main Street LLC, which owns the property located at 701 Main Street in Belvo, correct?
Yes.
And you are also the owner of Enterprise HVAC, which operates the business out of 701 Main Street in Belvo, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And in 2017, you have filed for site plan approval and requested certain variances from the planning board in order to do certain modifications to this building to create a second-floor addition and changes to the exterior, which included a canopy across the front of the building, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the, the canopy was there, correct? All right. And did it come a time when certain issues arose with regard to the merchandise that was under this canopy? Okay, could you explain briefly to the board some of the problems that you ran into?
Okay. The building is a little smaller building, that's why we need more storage, that's why we applied to build another second floor. Right now, there were two buildings on the second floor, we need a little space or room to, to stack. That's why we required, you know, you give me the paper to do, to close that for temporary storage till we build the second floor.
Okay. Now, this area that you're looking to close up, that's not for merchandise to stay there and be stored permanently, that's not where you're going to store, correct?
No.
That's just while you take it off the truck and you find a way to store it into the warehouse?
Yes.
Or to take it out of the warehouse and load it onto the truck?
Yeah, to take it off from the truck to, to put it there, like that, we can, we have room to, we can put it there to, to this, it's a store.
Okay.
So, temporary storage.
Okay. And is it, was my representation correct before that you did get fined by the city because you did have merchandise laying around the front of the building?
Yes.
Okay, and you did pay a fine for that?
Yes.
Actually, I believe it was in two occasions, correct? Okay. Now, building this wall that you proposed, it's, I guess I'll ask the engineer about that, but the wall is only on two sides, correct?
Two sides.
Okay. Is this going to change anything of the other parts that were approved in the site plan? Is anything else going to change?
No.
Okay. Are you still going to be able to provide the same parking spaces?
No. I think with a new layout, we provide, the first, before was four parking lots, but now the way we do it, now we got five parking lots.
Five parking spaces?
Yes, basically, yes.
Okay, so you're actually going to be able to provide one more parking space than what had originally been approved?
Yes.
Okay. You're not increasing any of the other existing conditions, which were, the lot width is still the same lot width, obviously, the rear yard is still the same, the side yard is still the same, the lot coverage, the parking stalls, you said, is actually, you're decreasing the, the need for the variance in that, and obviously, the loading dock is, is not changing. So, nothing else is changing for that, for what you required variances before? Okay. Now, your hours of operation, are they still going to be the same?
Yes, yes.
And that was, what are your current hours of operation?
Now, we open from 10:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon.
How many days a week?
Five days, and Saturday between 8:00 to 1:00 in the afternoon.
Okay. How many people do you have working in, in your facility right now?
Right now, we got 12 guys, 12, 12 people.
12 people. Does this closing of this building, this wall to, or these two walls, is that going to change anything?
Well, it changes everything.
Is that going to change the hours that you work?
Oh, no, 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 no change, no.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be the same.
All right. Is that going to in any way cause any more noise? Is that going to cause any more traffic? Anything else? I have no questions of this witness. If any member of the board has any questions?
Any member of the board?
The material that's being left out there now, is that because you don't have space inside for it, or it's not getting moved quick enough?
No, because when the, when the trucks is coming to unload, we have, we need room to, it's just, we build everything inside, that's why. I mean, it's only for the storage, for temporary, my guys, put everything inside, inside the building.
Material being left out overnight?
Right now, yes, some, because, because really, we need a little more space.
You need more space, or you're running out of space.
Yes. But that's why we plan to build the second floor, because...
Right, right, right.
Is that, is that worth it?
He didn't build a second floor, yeah, right?
No.
Okay. Any other members in the board? Does anybody in the public have a question? Vic?
Vic Mucucci, just one. The original approval, wasn't also for an additional building to the rear?
Yes. It's a second story. It's a second story across the whole building.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Nobody else in the public has a, stand up? Is the, in closer, right now, how do you take deliveries? You, you used the whole front, now you're only going to have a little driveway to unload your truck.
Right now, right now, we just, we just do one delivery at a time, and we park in the front. I can show you in the, in the profile now, how we do it.
Your engineer's gonna...
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to get a visual of her.
You can mark that as A1.
Is that part of the site?
It's part of the plan, it's part of the plan.
Yeah, that's the last page. Okay, just call it previously submitted site plan for the record, you don't have to mark it.
All right, so, previously submitted site plan, would you indicate what you were just trying to tell him about where it currently...
Right now, the board, we have a parking lot, parking lot, one, two, three, four parks.
No, no, you were talking, they were, the question was, where do they unload now?
Oh, right now, right now, we put the trucks over here like that.
Can everyone see, or is it blocking you?
Like that. Like that, we got plenty to come out and install everything. All the time, we put it here in the driveway, you can see the driveway here.
Because that's the only driveway, right?
Yes.
And then the rest of it is just the space because the wall?
No, that, the wall is over here.
Yeah.
Yes. And the parking is gonna be like that.
There are boys, or what's the...
Fourth floor.
So, you're cutting the whole curb to open everything else? Is there's no sidewalk there now, or is there a sidewalk there?
Right now, even, you see, everywhere there's no sidewalks over here, but even, right now, they, they put that, that sidewalk, but right now, as you see, the front building is over here, it's no, it's no sidewalks.
Okay. So, it's gonna, so you're gonna put the sidewalk there, curb cut the whole thing, and then they just park all across the front of it?
Yes, probably here, and my, 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 the leaders, they're coming from here.
Your delivery's coming, that stays up, so the parking will be right there in front of that wall?
Yeah, for the, yes.
And that's the wall that's being built?
Yes, this wall over here. And that, yes. The wall is gonna be this side and this side, and over here, it's gonna be a car stop. You can see, over here. Let me show you about Carlos. Look. It's only two walls. This, the front elevator, the other front with the dock, and the other side, it's gonna be over here.
Can I just say the other side?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's the whole wall, all the way across, and just the one at the corner there is where you enter the thing?
Yeah, in the front.
So, you can open all of them?
No, we just open this one. Because this one is going over here, I mean, so... That wall is gonna be over here. Like that, it's easy to load and unload everything.
What's it made out of?
The addition core. Andy, what's it made out of?
It's a corrugated, galvanized.
Yeah, you can see this.
He didn't ask the engineer.
It's...
And over here, it's gonna be a truck.
Last class on the clock?
Yes, it's gonna be glass.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question. Does he have any plans on doing the addition that was approved?
He does, but the, the construction was, was, turned out to be much more difficult than was anticipated. They ran into some serious problems when they started digging. The water level there is very high, so, yeah, that complicated things tremendously.
All right. Well, he was approved in May of 2017 for two-story additions on both buildings, correct?
It's, it's actually...
They treated it in the resolution as two buildings made out of different materials.
Right.
I'm not sure why, I obviously wasn't here, but has he applied for building permits to do that work?
I, I don't know how, where the permits are.
Right. Mr. Di Lorenz, has he ever applied for building permits for the addition?
For the second floor?
Yes.
No, no, he did this for the, the canopy, not for the second floor. So, is, is there a date on which he plans to make the building permit application and start construction? Because what it sounds like is that he needed the approval because he needs more space, and now he has stuff outside because he didn't get the additions built, because, and he still needs more space, so he's doing this to, as a temporary solution to it.
He's doing this as a temporary solution. As I said, the, the project turned out to be more difficult than was anticipated. There is a financing application which is also in place, so it, it is proceeding, it's not proceeding quite as quickly as had originally been anticipated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have another, uh, does anybody in the audience have a question? Mr. Sheldon?
Just one more quick question. Michael Sheldon, 47th Fletch Street. Since you have some materials being kept outdoors due to lack of storage space, do you have proper security? Do you have a gate or video surveillance to make sure none of your, your property is stolen in the middle of the night?
Yeah, we got, we got some cameras.
You do have cameras, sorry. High definition?
High definition.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And it's closed in now, right? With, with that, with the fence that's being put up, right?
Not yet.
No, if, if this is to be approved, then it will be, everything will be secure, nothing will be left over now outside.
One side, one side.
Unlocked, yeah, okay, okay.
There's only a closing two, two of the three sides.
So, it's still open?
Cameras. It's open on the, it'll be open on the north side, correct?
No.
There's no wall on the north side.
There is one bit, there is one building. Right now, here, it's a building, you can see.
Yeah, but this, this is open.
No, but, no, but...
Yeah, and the building takes up the place.
This wall comes almost over here, to the point, okay? I mean, it's, it's gonna be close.
Little gap.
So, it's closed in, all right, so it's more secure than it would be before.
All right. Another, the board members, have any other questions? Do you have another witness?
All right, yes, then I'd like to quote the engineer, Francisco Biddet.
Excuse me, Tom, no, it's a member asked a question.
Did I hear you write that you had complications on the lot right now with the water table?
When they started to dig, yes, there was, the holes were filling up with water faster than they could...
I'm, I'm not really sure. I remember the application, but I wasn't sure if there was a, if this was just an add-on to the building level?
Well, this was when they were putting the, the foundation for...
For a footing?
The canopy.
Oh, for the canopy, for the canopy, all right. Well, the water table doesn't have anything to do with building the second floor.
No, not the second floor, but when they started doing...
All right, right.
These things, that they put these huge beams down, obviously, for the support.
Gotta take a long time down there, really.
Maybe they just shouldn't have started this during the rainy season.
That's it? Yeah, if you, if you have another witness.
Please, if I may, the engineer.
Can you do one?
I gather, is it okay if I just ask for an adjournment at this point?
Yeah. Sure.
It looks like, I think you stopped at 10, and my client had a personal circumstance, some was operated at Temple today, he wanted to run back to Philadelphia, so it doesn't look like we're gonna have to, we're gonna get very far, so he preferred to adjourn, if that's okay?
That's fine.
It's fine, man?
Just for the public, if anybody is here in connection with that application, which was the AB 2912, 5859, 590 and 594 Washington Avenue, that will be heard at the next meeting, which is when?
The next meeting is November 14th. I do have 675 Main already on the warehouse, I just wanted to let everyone know, that is already on, so we could coordinate.
We'll be behind that, I understand. Okay.
Okay.
So, that date is the date that this ma, that matter will be heard, you won't get any further notice? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, please proceed. Anyone?
No, next question.
Next question.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And your name and professional address?
My name is Francisco Perez, and I have an office in New York, 299 Broadway, New York, 10,000, 0, 1, 0, 0, 0, 7.
Thank you.
Mr. Perez, what is your professional education, please?
I'm engineer, I got a bachelor, so, ceiling engineer, almost 40 years ago.
And are you licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, New Jersey and New York.
And you have a professional engineer accreditation, correct?
Correct.
Have you previously testified before a planning board or a zoning board of adjustment?
Yes, in New York.
Oh, so, chairman, the chairman has a...
Thank you. Mr. Perez, you prepared the site plan that is presented this evening, correct?
Correct.
Could you explain to the members a little bit more about the construction of the wall that is being proposed?
Sure. Okay, this, I usually, basically, is one wall here, it's kind of a fence, because it's not really a, a wall with insulation, it's just a plain metal deck with some windows as shown here, because it's not, it's just for storage, or for, actually, what he has is an unloading, unloading area, so this is the, the right name. So, it's simply kind of a fence, but we cover the, the whole side, the, this south side, and the, and the west, west, south side, okay? So...
What material is it made out of?
This is a metal deck.
Okay.
And... It's galvanized metal roofing deck?
Yes, galvanized, and, but it will have some, a finish, like a special painting, so that is...
Tall, tall.
It's not just the plain gray that you see in the galvanized paints, so it will have a nice finish.
So, it'll be an attractive color?
Yeah, yeah.
And did I hear something about windows?
Yeah, there are some small windows to provide... Yeah, there are some small windows to provide light to the inside. But at the top, we are planning to put the windows over there.
Yes. And the support between what appears to be columns, are those the, the beams that are currently holding up the canopy?
No, we did independent things because the canopy was designed to be open. So these, these fans will have its own foundations and its own columns, really its columns. Columns and beams, yeah, because we need to support the wind loads anyway. So they will be independent.
Okay.
Good chair. So you said canopy, so is your canopy up already?
Yeah, there is a canopy on top of...
On the top?
Which of you? The canopy right now...
There you go, sure, buddy. I, I got you.
The canopy is covered in this area.
Okay. So the canopy is this way, and the fence is gonna go this way?
Correct.
Okay, so it's somewhat of a...
It will be, they'll lose the space.
Close in space.
The wall will be parallel to the edges of the canopy with some, a recess of some fill.
Understood.
Any other board members have questions in this witness? Does anybody in the public have questions? Mr. Sheldon?
Just curious, how tall is this wall, proposed wall? Is this 10 feet or is it 12 feet, 12 feet high?
13 feet.
13 feet. Time is out. Deputy Chief Corporal didn't ask this question, so maybe I'm completely gone, but is that, will this wall pose any problems for our police department in conducting surveillance or doing rounds? Will they be, will it make it more difficult for the Belver Police Department to keep an eye on?
The driveway is open still, they can pull in the driveway.
There's an open hard area. I don't have the plan, so I don't know the full extent of how far the wall is going to cover. I just wanted to make sure that the Belver Police Department would...
If they type a bomb, they can pull in the driveway. With windows, I know it's pretty high, but we can make accommodations with the windows, but it's not closed. It's an open structure, right? It's no different than any other property that we work with.
The Belver Police Department is happy with it.
And it closes at night, right? You close the gate, nobody's getting in. The gate will close at night?
Yes.
When you close up shop, you close it, that's a pocket?
It's open at 5:00, 5:00, it's next day, Sunday, tomorrow morning.
It'll still be open on the one side.
No, 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 it's gonna be closed.
There would be a gate.
If it's closed, then it's closed.
It's closed.
Then it'd be like any other properties. We have a problem, we contact the owner.
It's all locked up.
You have no more witnesses, right? Does anybody in the public have any comments they'd like to make at this time? If not, you want to sum up?
Again, ladies and gentlemen, I believe that this is a very simple, very de minimis change to what was previously approved. I do believe that aesthetically, it will be more appealing. Certainly, it will be much easier for him. It will help to safeguard his product. It will make it easier for them to be able to run their business and keep their products safe while they're loading and unloading. And I, I think that just driving down the street, you know, obviously, there's no neighbors there that are actually looking at it because it's an industrial area, but just driving down the street, it will certainly be more appealing to see a pleasant-looking wall than to see merchandise hanging out in front there. So I ask that you please consider this application favorably.
Thank you very much. Someone like to make a, a motion for approval of this application? Mr. Boe made the motion, and Jacque seconded it. Corinne, please call her over.
Mr. Benaro.
Yes.
Mr. Zangara.
Yes.
Mr. Condi.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Mr. Forzog.
Yes.
Mr. Vaziano.
Yes.
Ms. Wilmer.
Yes.
And Ms. Britta.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have no further business. At this time, would anyone like to make a motion? Oh, yeah, okay.
91 Perry looks for a special meeting Monday, November 4th for your project. If I can at least inform them, I could confirm with them, so...
Is everybody good with a special meeting on Monday, November 4th? Everybody here?
I'll run you the meeting.
All right, all right, Corinne, I guess it looks good?
Yes.
And then, before we do conclude the meeting, we have our special meeting Thursday, October 24th. So we have a, a meeting before our next break. We schedule a meeting. Please mark your calendars, and if anyone cannot make it, contact me, myself, or Corinne, and let us know.
That's the 7, right? Special?
Yes.
And the 4th to 7th?
November 4th is...
Terry Street.
What time, 7?
And the 24th is the Frank Lloyd Bennett Center.
Just one thing to note, that is, your special meeting on the 4th is the night before the general election, is on the following day. There are a number of people on board and elsewhere who may have other activities planned that night, last minute campaign rallies, et cetera, so I, I don't know if that poses any complication for your meeting, but, you know, there are a number of...
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Sheldon. If we have nothing else, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Anyone second it?
Second.
The meeting is adjourned.